And audio and camera and lights were all set. Okay, then. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 6, 2015, at 7:00 PM, meeting in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call the board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifert.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Minz.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Running late maybe, or excused for the moment. We may see him later.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Emanuel Gentey.
Running late. We hope to see him later.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
I believe she called in her absence, so she's excused.
And Commissioner Bobby Pechon.
Here.
Bob Pechon. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No.
No, Mr. Chair.
No amendments. All right. Let's have the approval of minutes of August 4, 2015.
So moved.
All right. So moved by Bob Pechon, second.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie Ernst. All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved as read. We have no communication, so we'll move on to continued public hearings. This is item four. This addresses PC 14-15 and ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article 3, Division 6, entitled Variances Heard by Board of Adjustment, specifically at Section 3-604, entitled Administrative Variances, and amending Division 7, entitled Appeals, specifically at Section 3-702, entitled Administrative Appeals, to extend the time required for an aggrieved party to file a notice of appeal to the Board of Adjustment from the current 10 days to 30 days, and to shift the cost of such an appeal to the owner of the property seeking the benefits derived by the issuance of an administrative variance, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please. Kenny, good evening.
Good evening.
Kenny Each is here. Let the record reflect that.
Yeah, good evening, members of the planning commission and members of the audience. This item was initially heard at the July 7, 2015, meeting, and after staff presentation, the council had some issue with the fact that the cost of the appeal had to be shifted to the one, to the applicant, not to the applicant, even though his staff would have issued approval for an administrative variance. So what we did, so we went back and then we proposed some recommendations, some revisions. So they're not in the ordinance per se that would go in for, but it's part of the staff presentation, and I'm going to read them for you. Because basically, the proposed amendment, not the part that deals with the extension to the appeal period, that's what we basically reanalyzed in this report, as opposed to the one that talks about shifting the cost to the applicant. And then based on the requirements of Article 3, Section 3-1004 of the City's Endeavorment Regulations, we found the proposed amendment to be in keeping with the purpose and intent of that ordinance. But what we've also did, we have made some revision, we have proposed some revision for the planning commission to really consider tonight, and then it can be found in page four of the report, starting on page four, which is highlighted in yellow. So in order to avoid all the issues surrounding the administrative variance approval, so what we propose now to have, before the applicant, an applicant for administrative variance submit any application, they get the signed consent of the neighbors. So at least they are, they know what's going on, and not to find out after the fact when the application has already been submitted and approved by staff. So with that being said, the applicant, there are different options that we propose. It can either get the signed consent of the adjacent property neighbors, or if they can, sometimes if the house, the property is occupied by a tenant, if it's being rented out, to send a letter to the owner on record, not the tenant, to have the tenant sign the issue. And then it's because sometimes if, in that, if you follow that option and cannot get that neighbor's signature, so we also allow, in about 30 days, because the letter has to be sent with a return receipt, and they have to show proof that they have done a good, fit effort to get the signature of the property owner. And then the mail notices, that's another option. So we have that also, but that's why we say we have to wait 30 days before staff can even make, or can either approve or deny the application. So I think if we revise the code to include that provision, that would help with avoiding all that issue of appealing an administrative decision. Because if, for example, none of the neighbors signed the application, they had no consent, that would trigger automatically the application to go to a Board of Adjustment variance hearing instead of staff making that decision administratively. So this is the tweak that we, staff proposed to even address the issue that was raised at the last meeting. And then if the planning commission finds that those, the revision to be in line with what we're discussing, to recommend that also to the city commission for approval, or city council for approval. Thank you.
If I may, when we left off at the last hearing, there were three issues that this commission presented, and I would like to summarize those three issues. One was the time of appeal. We came to the realization quite quickly at the last meeting that the time for appeal was very short, 10 days, and that would include the mailing to, the mailing to the adjacent property owners, leaving something less than 10 days to appeal, when normally the appeal periods are usually 30 days. They are for, if you wanted to appeal a decision of the Board of Adjustment, it's 30 days to appeal by certiorari to the circuit court. So that was issue number one. Issue number two was to increase the awareness of those property owners immediately adjacent to the property requesting the variance. Why? Because usually these things, if they're advertised in the paper, they're often not, they're often missed. So there's going to be an increased coverage to only those properties that are adjacent to the property that's affected, and that's by a mailing. The third issue is the cost of appeal. This board was adamant in keeping the cost of the appeal to the applicant who's applying for the variance, period. Or the applicant who wants to request the appeal. I think that's where we left off. Because if you want to appeal, then you should bear the cost of that right.
If I'm the neighbor and I don't like what my neighbor's doing on that variance, I'm the one that should foot the bill, not.
Yes, sir. Exactly. The reason being is because if you're the property owner seeking the variance, you could end up receiving, having to pay for three appeals. There may be three neighbors that want to appeal. So now you're going to pay for three appeals? Or four, for that matter? So that's where we left off. And if you look at staff's report, you'll see in yellow highlight, subparagraph C. And the purpose of that is to delineate the coverage for the neighbors, and that would replace subparagraph C as it appears on page four of the ordinance. You'll see that C, right now, as it currently exists, is only one sentence. "The decision shall be transmitted by regular mail," et cetera. Well, what's being proposed this evening is to delete that sentence and bring in, import the language that you find on page four of the staff's report in yellow highlight. I hope that clarifies things. Thank you.
There's some other items that are listed that we never discussed, that I see that you've highlighted, that were never discussed in the ordinance also. Do you care to elaborate on that? Like, you mentioned tax amendments on page four, seven, item four, regarding pervious or permeable material on driveway.
That was a contribution. When I look at, if I am going to amend a particular section, I am going to clarify other sections that need cleaning up. So.
I didn't really catch it when I.
Yes, sir.
Clicked that just before, but I noticed there's some other items.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Now, you hear me now? Okay? Okay. Yeah, because I'm seeing other areas that you cleaned up. I just want to make sure.
I take the liberty for cleaning up other sections, even though it's not pertinent to the modification at hand. I'm not going to leave a typo there. I'm not going to ignore that, ignore it, because right now, the language that I'm striking is previous. It shouldn't be previous. It should be pervious. So for starters, it's an error. And then pervious or permeable, and that's basically what this was meant to read originally. So I fixed it. I volunteered that fix for you.
Okay. And then the other thing, though, in like, page five, is Section 3-702, now that actually is the tax amendment portion that relates to fees that we discussed, correct?
Yes, that is the proposed language shifting, which, this is, is this D? Are you referring to subparagraph D?
Section 3-702, administrative appeals, paragraph would be section A.
There are other changes there, and there is no longer a director of building and zoning?
No, right below it, where it says, "As such, fees may be amended from time to time by resolution of the city council. The applicant, property owner seeking the issuance of an administrative variance shall bear the cost."
That's the proposed language. That's the language that you found offensive at the last meeting.
That's the new.
So based on your recommendation this evening, I will redraft this ordinance for council consideration with your recommendations.
Right.
But I had to reflect the requesting party's desires first.
What wasn't clear to me is the fact that, I mean, you summarized everything in your staff report, which is good, but then I needed to get it translated over to how the ordinance will read and how it appears, and with your explanation, I understand. So that section, we agree that that's where the change was, and also on, well, you could tell me, you'd probably find it quicker than I. The other section were that, the three points that were discussed previously that you mentioned to us. The appeals, the, I'm sorry, the time for appeals, 30 days, that was addressed there. Yes. And what section was that again?
That is Section 3-702. It extends the period of time from 10 days to 30 days.
And then the abutting property was what section?
That would be on staff's report, page number four, subparagraph C. That's where you have the language requiring consent of the adjacent property owners. And you know, once you attain that, the chances of appeal are mitigated or moved, because you already have a document indicating the approval of an adjacent property owner. How can they now turn around and submit an appeal? As a matter of fact, the property owner seeking the variance can very well use that as their defense in the event an appeal is raised.
That process, the mailing process, does he have to go to the city to request that mailing be done? What is the procedure with that? I don't quite, I mean, does he just type a letter out and mail it to all his neighbors? Or does he, what is the mechanism with that?
I mean, that's one option. The first option is to go to the neighbor and show them the plans, and then explain them the nature of the variance that you're requesting. And then if you get their consent to sign on the plan, and sign on a form that the city would provide.
But they have a form, a form that they can go to the, go to the neighbor and tell them, "I'm not happy with the guy putting up a building in the back."
Yeah, and then in the event, the property owner does it reside at the property, and there's a tenant, and then they have to send that letter.
So the applicant takes the letter to the neighbors.
Yes.
And comes in and tells you that, "My neighbor signed these."
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and then we have their name and signature and telephone number.
So you double check. There is a procedure to double check, to verify that those claims are.
And then they have to be the one on record also.
All right. How many, what is, is there a point, a number that, you know?
I mean, it's when you project the property line, whatever, whatever properties are being touched by that line.
So if all three are consent, or is it two and consent?
No, I mean, you want all of them to consent.
Right. But that would weigh in the appeals process, if only two consent and one doesn't.
It could, it could. That would open up, if, say, there are four adjacent property owners, and one refuses to consent, you know, at least the property owner knows that there may be a challenge. It's still up to the non-consenting property owner to file an appeal. If they do not file an appeal, then it ends there.
But isn't it likely that one property owner is more affected by the variance than the others?
That could be, and, you know, it only takes one property owner that who is affected to issue an, to request an appeal.
And I think that's common anyway, correct?
That's how it works.
Right.
And, by the way, they have to make their case. It's not like, "I don't like it."
Right.
You know, "Grant me the appeal."
Sure.
It takes a little, it's a quasi-judicial proceeding. You're going to have to present some evidence to justify a decision against the property owner seeking the variance.
Right. All right. Do we have any other questions?
Only that, at the last meeting, my point was, and still is, really, that the beneficiary of the variance should bear the cost of any, of any appeal. If my neighbor wants to get an exception to the code, he's the, and I, it affects me and I don't like it, he's the beneficiary of the grant. So if the appeal process is undertaken, I always think the guy that has, he wants to make the change. He's the winner of the variance. Not the fellow that's being affected.
Procedurally and through the court system, the person filing or seeking the appeal is the one to pay. If I file a lawsuit, if I'm a plaintiff on a lawsuit, I am in charge. I am responsible for making, paying for that claim. It's my right to be heard, to be, for my grievance to be addressed through the judiciary, but that right comes with a price tag, and that is the filing fee.
And then not to forget that the applicant already paid an application fee to file, to apply for the variance. So it's on that, it's getting it for free from the city. There's already a cost that they already.
And.
We're punishing him for following, for being right. That would be the problem with what I see with that. If he was right all along, then you're saying, "Well, okay, you're right, but you've got to pay it." No. You won the case. He should not have to pay it, because he, in effect, won that appeal. So you can't shift that burden over to him.
On a variance, you put a notice out, correct?
Not for an issued.
There's a notice on a variance.
That's a regular, a regular variance. The notice.
Yeah, when I applied for a variance, the signs show up, say, on Biscayne Boulevard, where Big Daddy's was, or Flanagan's, and there's a notice that's posted, plus the surrounding businesses get notified.
Yes, sir.
Then you have a hearing before the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And then all parties should be present at the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir.
And if the variance is granted, so be it. And somebody wants to file an appeal to that.
Yes, sir.
Well, then that person who files the appeal after you go before that board, he's the one that should be paying the cost.
And that's how it goes, through the regular, normal variance process. The administrative variance, it starts with the department that issues the variance, then could be appealed, that decision could be appealed to the BOA, which then can be appealed to the court.
And that should be on the person doing the appeal.
I can see now.
I don't see why, you know.
Yeah. So in fact, in fact, if, in the event somebody should file an appeal, request an appeal from the BOA, based on an administrative variance, should they go above and beyond the Board of Adjustment's decision? They have to pay for the appeal. Were you going to go back to the property owner?
Sure.
So you can't. So they would have to pay for the appeal.
All right. Let's open the public hearing and see if any members of the public wish to weigh in on this. Public hearing is opened. Anyone willing to speak to this is welcome to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
William Prevattel, 11950 North Bay Shore Drive. Just a minor concern, it seems like if someone were appealing an action, and they had, like as you would find in a court case, if they had a reason for that, and it was, the decision went, fell to their side, then maybe they would be relieved of the obligation. But if it goes against them, then they would be responsible for taking what might be an irresponsible action of making this appeal. Just sort of following some sort of legal precedent, I believe, is generally the way it works, and that might fall in logically in this case. I haven't been very articulate, have I?
Well, the way it really works, Bill, and we'll address that for the moment, the appellant who's taking the appeal pays the fees upfront, because there are a number of administrative costs that have to be dealt with in order for that appeal to move up the ladder. And so the person filing the appeal is responsible for those costs. The same will be true at the city level. The homeowner that doesn't like the issue is going to have to bear the cost of filing that appeal, because the city is going to have to incur costs and expenses in getting ready for the next hearing.
Sure.
So the person making the appeal, the appellant, is responsible for that fee.
Right.
And that is the way it works in the courts, and that's the way it should work here as well. There should be consistency in responsibility.
Isn't it quite often that the failing party pays court costs, and sometimes the legal costs of the opposition?
This would be up to how the city ordinance ultimately gets reviewed, or in a subsequent ordinance determining whether or not costs can be taxed, based on who wins or loses. You file the appeal, you prevail. If the court finds justification, sometimes you can recover your appellant costs. I don't think the city ordinance, at this point, is ready to address that particular issue. The other side of the coin is if you file an appeal, and it's deemed frivolous, you get beaned extra, not just for the initial appellate fee, but for all of the costs in defending the appeal.
Right. And there's a chance of having a frivolous.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. And that can be really expensive.
That's an excellent point.
And that's what I'm trying to bring up.
Excellent point.
Because then you're paying the other guy's lawyer, and the other guy's lawyer is not going to lowball his bid for time served. And you see, so it gets really expensive if the appeal is limited to, "Well, gee, I don't like it."
I don't imagine you'd find a friendly judge anywhere that, over a minor, relatively minor issue, having appeals filed back and forth between two parties, he's going to only take it so long before he just says, "This is all frivolous. Go away."
And for the appellant, that's another reason for having the appellant pay, is that it does limit frivolous lawsuits. If you were capable of filing lawsuits gratis, can you imagine? You would tie up the court system, you would tie up every system imaginable. So if you have a valid claim, then put your money, you know, where your mouth is, and pay the.
And then two points I want to add to that. The cost of the appeal, to file a notice of appeal to the Board of Adjustment, it's only $100, way less than the cost of an administrative, special exception, or variance, or regular variance to the Board of Adjustment. And really, it's really not all big fee that they have to incur to show appeal, and doesn't have to go through the entire process like a regular, have to pose the property. And then another point I also wanted to make, because the appellant is really not appealing the applicant's decision, but the city's decision.
Yes.
Sure.
So, I mean, how can we shift the burden to the applicant?
Yeah. That's been our position all along.
The only time that, there could be a reverse. It could be that the city denied the applicant's administrative variance, and now, now that applicant is filing the appeal.
In which case, then the applicant has to pay.
In which case, it's already covered in the application. So it could go, you know, there's two sides to the story.
Right.
But even in this case, the applicant would have to pay for the notice of appeal.
Right. In that instance. All right, Bill, you're still in a lot of time.
Just as a close, my concluding concern is, or my appeal is, that the board adopt whatever measures are best to mitigate frivolous actions. That we want to keep that at bay, and that is my appeal.
And for that reason, we make the appellant pay the fee.
Whatever measures you see fit, and our council sees fit, to best frame this, so that it isn't abused on a regular basis, causing the neighborhood problems, causing our city staff problems, causing panels problems, that it not be, because we do have some people that, you know, may be prone to doing it, well, people in general, in life. There are people that take advantage of situations, and we don't want that to happen. If there's a legitimate reason and a foundation for their concerns, then certainly we want to invite that, we want to hear that, but we don't want this frivolousness of just because there's some personal situation going on, or really very minor incident that could be occurring. We want it as solid as possible, especially in our city. Thank you.
Who would make that decision, if it's frivolous or not? The hearing body, right? The judge or the?
Yeah, that's usually.
That would not happen at the city level. That would happen in a certain court.
At our level, we would, we would look at the code and see the code was followed, and the standards were followed for approving the variance. And it would be like that. It would be sort of, if it gets, if it goes beyond City Hall, then that may be an issue.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Last call for anyone wishing to speak to this issue. I hear no thundering heard, I see no rising cloud of dust in the distance, and therefore this public area is closed. All right, gentlemen, you've heard the issues, you've read the report. Unless there's further discussion, the chair will call for a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Each?
Yeah, I, so moved.
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Each moves for approval. Mr. Ernst seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. There be no further business. To come before this august body, the commission is adjourned.
Kevin?
Yes.
One second on the.
Oh. All right, one second. What's up?
You approved the minutes.
Yes, we did.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was late coming up here, but on page four, seven, we need to commission discussion?
You have an issue on the minutes.
Yeah.
I'll allow it to be revisited.
Either a typo or.
Page four of seven.
Page four, seven, second paragraph, Commissioner Each, on the third line, that should be northeast 135th Street instead of 125th Street.
Do we see that, Madam Secretary?
Third line, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Each voices approval for the newly integrated climate change element, and then it goes down, he inquired about the reserve, northeast 125th, that should be northeast 135th. I just want you to know that I do read these things.
Oh, I'm glad to know that, Kenny.
I would impress everybody with my vast amount of.
We count on you reading these things.
Do we need to remove that?
Yes, I would, I would put the item back to vote with the amendments.
Where the chair will allow the issue to be reviewed, again, at this time, with the amendment that Mr. Each has read into the record, the chair will call to approve the amendment.
I will approve the amendment to the minutes.
Made by Mr. Ernst, seconded by Mr. James. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Now, once again, we'll vote to approve the minutes. All in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Someone? Aye, okay. I'll roll with that one. All right, yes, Mr. Prevattel, you have an item.
Might there be a little bit of public forum? May I request a short period of public forum?
Well, it's early, it's only 7:30. I give you a few minutes.
Thank you. And it does, William Prevattel, 11950 North Bay Shore Drive, and it does pertain directly to our planning commission. As all of you know. As all of you know, for such a long time, we requested review of the comprehensive plan, and it was presented to the panel, basically saying, "Hey, pass this and we're gonna pass it on at the next council meeting." Many of you, many of us, attended these sessions that were community workshops. There were a number of them. There were a number of other hearings, planning commission meetings, a joint hearing. Many things were raised. Trouble is, as of the last council meeting, very, very little, if any, of those suggestions have been adopted. Very little. And where are there cases where there are some changes? You can go case by case. You could say, "This area needs this," and they fall short. It's more than what it was, but they fall short. "This area needed this, but we'll suggest this." "This area needs that, and we'll suggest less." Time and time again, throughout the entire city. The opportunity of gaining the park over the Winston Water Plant? Not a peep, not a plea from Community Planning Development or the, or the consultants. We gotta, we could resurrect a free park, almost, nothing. And people keep coming up and suggesting, you know, these possibilities. And we had, if you had come here, those who had made it at the last council meeting, Melgren Associates came up with a presentation that they should have had many, many, many months ago regarding urban design and such. But unfortunately, the, the proposals are very seductive in these heights and very nuanced and such. The trouble is that there still has not been, despite our many requests, a single economic feasibility of any of it. And what has shown, and, and some of these changes are not very different from what's in place. And you go, "Well, how come it hasn't sparked? How come things aren't changing?" And things really aren't changing because they're not economically viable. And as I pointed out in the council meeting, just less than a block away, to our east, in front of the Deals parking lot, someone identified that property or owned the property. Someone put the effort into saying, "Let's try to do something here." Went through permitting, went through architectural engineering processes. Said, "Okay, we're gonna pay for a foundation, we're gonna pay for roof, the walls, we're gonna pay for this." They build a one-story, as I've said before, a taxpayer. Basically, something that will just cause, bring income to pay for that land. But they weren't limited to one story, they may have had a few more, but certainly they weren't, sky wasn't the limit. And that developer, right here in front of us, drew the economic conclusion that even though we've paid for all those processes, and we've paid for a foundation and a floor slab, and we've paid for a roof, that it doesn't make economic feasibility to do another slab and a couple walls, and another slab and a couple walls, to the extent that they're allowed here. That they couldn't do a, a major project, so they did something minimal. And that's what we'll continue to see. That it made no economic feasibility, and we're gonna continue to see these single-story, who knows, it'll probably be a sneaker barn or something like that that shows up there, or another dollar store. And we'll continue to see either these one-story neighborhood deflating constructions and structures, or we'll continue to see more Section 8-type housing, which every community should have and needs, but not when that's the only type of housing we have, the only thing that we see. And they, they're allowed to go mid-rise, but we never see anything on the, on the upper end to give additional economic support to raise the tax base and to inspire the community. In North Miami Beach, oh, actually, before I forget, let me, let me give an example. We, we had, some of our highest density was 25 dwelling units in the, the past comp, 25 dwelling units per acre. And just even saying it, you know, is, is kind of ridiculous when, when you realize so many places are 150, 250 down Miami Beach. 1,000 in Miami, in some areas, 1,000. And still, that's low. To my, my own building in New York, which is just an average building, is like 3,000. I don't even think about it as anything special. We're on the 20th floor, and it's just a building. But 1,000 down Miami. And we don't realize, particularly our council doesn't realize, that, "Oh, it was 25." And because they're so used to compromising, they go, "Oh, we'll, we'll go to 75 or 100." It, it doesn't quite work that way. Compromise doesn't work. We need to meet a critical mass in order to have these projects successful. And it turns out that it's a pretty high number to compete with elsewhere. Because if you're gonna put in a building, it's gonna be the same cost, whether it's here in North Miami, or over in Surfside, or up in Avatar, or downtown, or Miami Beach. The building itself, the foundations, the structure, the enclosure, the electrical, the heating, the ventilation, the roofs, all the rest, basically the same. It costs a little bit more because of the traffic someplace else. And that's why maybe Doral can do it for a little bit less. It's gonna cost the same. So where is any potential developer that wants to make a nice investment, do a nice project? Where are they gonna go? They gotta come here, North Miami, and, and just, you know, quabble over, you know, "We have only a couple floors," and it doesn't make any economic sense from the, from the get-go. It just does not make any sense. Or are they gonna go, "Oh, I'll pay a couple extra bucks, I'll get better land, and I can get, you know, three times the return on it, and it'll be adopted." Aleem Gani confirmed that Biscayne Landing, they have 25-story buildings, and they still have to sell their net square footage at $500 a square foot. That's the figure that I had come up with also. You have to come, like about 300 dwelling units per acre, about 250, about 300 feet, about 250 dwelling units per acre. And you can bring the cost down to, remember, you're paying for all these smaller parks at lo, lower amounts. But, you know, when you buy a unit, an apartment, a thousand-foot apartment, you're paying for part of the hallway, and the elevators, and part of the roof, and part of the parking, and all the rest of these amenities and, and such. So therefore, the cost per square foot, net square foot, it turns out to be $500 a square foot. I don't, if I, if I may. This is, this is confirmed by looking at North Miami Beach, where the zoning has changed.
Which we painfully wear, Bill. You're singing to the choir here. We, we understand the absence of the economic feasibility. And, and we went to these meetings where Melgren publicly said, "We, we did not adopt any of the recommendations that were made."
Include, including the structure, exempting the structured parking down below, which everybody said, "What a, what a smart idea that is." And yet, they fight to stop that. I mean, it's, it's, it's so obvious.
It is amazing when we're a landlocked city. Did you see in the, in the Herald today, the triangular parcel of land that's about to go for some really big bucks in North Miami Beach for the third major project development up there?
You know, you know what really gets me?
Yes.
32 stories they're gonna put up there, but we can't go past 20. They bring in a consultant towards the end, and he comes up with this bollock about, "We should only go higher than 20 stories off of I-95." Like, shadows are gonna be a bad thing. As far as I know.
You've gotta wonder where these guys.
The shadows would be over I-95, and you're cooling down the roadway. So why are shadows a bad thing?
It should be a benefit.
When I walk in the morning and I watch shadows out there, shadows are a bad thing. You know something? This city's gonna die on the vine because certain people in this city don't want any kind of development. There's nothing wrong with going 30 stories, there's nothing wrong with having a compact urban center, there's nothing wrong with more traffic. Because you know what, folks? The traffic is here, but we're not getting the benefits of it.
Well, when they get that triangular parcel developed, there'll be more of it coming down.
More traffic, and we're the ones that are getting, we're the ones that are getting stuck.
And we're not gonna get a city development on that.
If the traffic's gonna come through our.
And that's why I am totally against the super majority because one area of the city is gonna control the rest of the city.
But it's okay.
Commissioner Ernst was cited by name for, for suggesting 300 feet. Whereas many people support that, that was defeated. And yet, we raised the point here about the shadows. Isn't it interesting that, oh, all of a sudden, like, one or two buildings with shadows, that that's a concern, when in fact, actually, the shadows are not really aligned as they say or as they'd like to think it is, and as harmful as they are? Particularly when you're in an open area like the water, where it doesn't affect anybody. But they never brought up that concern with Biscayne Landing.
Well, of course not.
No, Biscayne Landing, which was 200, already 250 feet, all of a sudden, gets 150 feet tacked onto it, more than like any place else in the entire city. And I don't recall anybody up here, I know Kenny had said, Commissioner Reach had said, you know, "We want everybody sort of elevated and be able to put the pa, parking down below in Biscayne Landing." But I don't remember anybody saying, "What we really need, what this city really needs is to give away more to Biscayne Landing." I don't remember that. Yet, that's the one thing that's not, that, nobody comes up and says, "Oh, why is that going on?" Or why don't, that's it now, 400 feet of shadows. So, why isn't that raised?
It happens because they pay very good lobbyists who, who hook themselves to the council members. But with all due respect.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
This is not on the agenda, and we need to wrap this up.
Two, two things, please.
Yes, all right.
One day, there is a CRA community meeting over at the Gwen Margola Center. Last night, we had a CRA meeting here at the Advisory Council. One of the things that they brought up, the staff, which is right on the money, is that the CRAs around the state are saying, "Look, we gotta have, not only workforce housing, but we gotta have private, good, structural construction going up, multifamily, what have you, because that's gonna increase the TIF, the taxable increment, okay? All we've been getting before is because no developer, like Mr. Prevattel stated, wants to come before us, all we're getting is government subsidies, workforce housing. And we're gonna keep doing that, and it's gonna kill the city. Nobody wants to come in here and build a 10-story building and, and not make a dollar. And there was nothing wrong with pedestal parking or anything else.
And there's been so little understanding of heights and densities.
And then Tuesday, and then on Tuesday, we have the city council meeting. I suggest that us members of the planning commission be at that city council to voice our opinion on this land use. This is an absolute travesty of what's going on to this city.
Kevin Burns had, former Mayor Kevin Burns had brought up the point that, to get an idea of what density is, everybody's familiar with this building, this four-story City Hall building. He said it's 40,000 square feet. If you take the 750 square feet, which is actually not a bad size for an apartment, it's a nice one, better apartment, 750 square feet per apartment, you then have more than 50 dwelling units in this building. That includes, you have some room for circulation even. 50 dwelling units in this building on a quarter acre. If you step back from City Hall and said, "That's a residential building, and it has that minimum requirement for housing," that's a 200 dwelling unit per acre building. This building would be 200 dwelling units per acre. And everybody's thinking, "Oh my God, we're gonna build, you know, something like the World Trade Center." It's not. And nobody has conveyed that to our city council, or to the public, or anything else. And it's a crime. It's really a crime how this is going down, and, and we're missing opportunities. This, finally, this is, you've probably seen it before, I'm proposing something that can be applied throughout the entire city. And it's any location throughout the entire city that's already has this, you know, this compromised, high-density, high-height, highest height and highest density. But it's really not enough. And what it's calling for is saying, "Okay, if you have a property like that, and you really wanna make something happen, and you want it to be something nice, you can. And there'll be, you'll pay a little bit of a price for it. You're gonna make sure that it's free market, that it's not gonna be governed and subsidized. You're gonna be sure, just like they, even though that was manipulated, it's gonna meet quotas for hiring, local hiring, for that project. And finally, you're gonna say that whatever you, whatever you construct, you're gonna provide a park also." This is something that could work. This is something that's been, probably the only thing that's been written and submitted by the public, and yet, our Community Planning Development and Melgren, even though Melgren actually said, "Yeah, it works, it, because it uses the infrastructure that we're allowed to do," nobody has gone up and championed it. And this could provide a Fortune 500 company to come into downtown. It could provide something nice on 7th Avenue, or it could provide something nice on the water. It could kick off something. So I'd, I'd like your support, I'd like everybody to attend, if they could, the meeting, and find out why exactly. Some have been able to monopolize the entire city.
This item will be, will be, it's on the agenda for the 13th, and that would be the proper forum.
I hope to see all our council people.
Thank you, sir.
And we hope to see some more people there from the public. All right, thanks so much, Bill.
What can I say? Great minds think alike. Looks like you guys all covered. I really came tonight to vent in your favor. I went to that meeting, and I don't know whether anyone was there, or if you watched it on TV. What was really presented was a slideshow. Since I was a little girl, I knew that tall buildings would put a shadow on low buildings. So I don't know why some of our council people said, "Oh, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna vote with the pro." What pro? I don't know who this man was, or where he came from. However, all of you are pros. We've had past mayors, we've had attorneys, we've had architects, we've had developers. Why aren't they pros? Everybody was so enthused about this darn slideshow. And Mr. Gavin said, "Well, if I had seen this two years ago." You mean, if you saw some shadows two years ago, it would have changed your ideas about this plan? I'm, I'm so disappointed. I, I had hoped that, you know, that we were going somewhere in this city, and we're not. It's so embarrassing, as you say. They got $23 million for Dean's Gold. Is that the name of it? Two acres, not even three acres, 23 million. What did we get for Biscayne Landing? And now, there's like little whispers, like nobody knows what anybody else is doing. Now, all of a sudden, Biscayne Landing has decided, "We're not gonna get this amount, we're gonna get this amount. But don't talk about it." You know, when they give us a million dollars a year, who's gonna give them the police? Who's gonna give them the firemen? Who's gonna take care of the paperwork? I mean, Biscayne Landing is going to cost us money. And I don't know what all the secrecy is, or why our council does not defend us. I, I really feel sorry for this committee, because you've put years into this, free, free of charge.
Yes.
You're not pros to get all this money to show a slideshow. I mean, I was embarrassed. I'm sorry, I had to vent a little bit. But Bill, and you all, covered what I was going to say.
It's like talking to Dr. Phil tonight.
Thank you very, thank you very much, ma'am.
We really need to, to move on here. Make it short, go ahead, sir.
I'll be quick, gentlemen. Good evening, Commissioner.
Name and address as we're doing this.
Patrick Roberts, representing the Lively Stone Church, owners of 13855 Northwest 17th Avenue. We have actually come together with a group of developers, and we have formed a trust to pursue a development opportunity on the property. We are in the closing stages at the moment of putting the financing package together. If all holds together, we're talking about something in the region of about maybe $24 million worth of housing that will be coming to that particular location. We, however, have one slight problem. The current deadlock that exists with the zoning, the, the comprehensive plan, we will require some sort of a zoning modification. And because our understanding is the city is currently out of compliance, we are unable to even start to put together a, a meaningful.
Yes, you're presently not anywhere near the starting gate. And, and we understand and share the frustration with the city council that's unable to move an issue forward. It's as useless as Congress these days. Yes.
So, I'm simply adding my voice to the few members that turned up.
Indeed.
And my encouragement to you gentlemen, to please, 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 somehow, make something happen.
We would like to do that. We do, we had the ability.
We've been trying, sir, for months. Our, our recommendations went to the city council, and all we can do is sympathize with you.
And we'll continue, we'll continue to try, sir.
All right, let's, let's adjourn this meeting. There be no further business to come before the planning commission. We thank all of you for your thoughts and input, and we hope our council members will be so kind as to watch this between now and next week. And you're all invited to the CRA meeting on Monday and the council meeting on Tuesday. No further business, we are adjourned.